If we would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jesse, would you do the long call, please? Here.
Here.
Open Meeting Act is on the wall for your pleasure of reading. Would you in action of agenda? To approve the agenda for the April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Kimberly made a motion, Sam's second. Questions? Comments? Attorney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
I vote yes. Review and action on prior meeting minutes.
Move step to action on prior meeting minutes, April tenth, twenty-twenty-three, and waive the ruling.
Second. Attorney made a motion, Kimberly's second. Comments? I vote yes. Sam?
Yes.
Attorney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Communications, Edward.
Okay, well, I was pleased to get the report from Chris Long on the park cleanup that they had seven years. Everything went very quickly. And early comment was she could, she could use a little bit more mulch. And I said, okay, I didn't think you'd go through twenty bags. I guess so. But other than that, no, things went, things went very smoothly. I'll start a little update on, on some construction. There will be pouring the lighter for the enlarged pit for the service station tomorrow. Weather permitting. And then they will start the stretching for the, for the line, the new line that has to go in, which is probably why you saw H Street was closed today. I did, I was able to get that posted out. I guessed when I posted it that it was probably Monday, and it was Monday, so my guessing was pretty good this time. That project is, is, they're not asked for an extension, it's still scheduled to be completed by the end of the month. And I don't see why they won't be able to complete that unless it's crazy, crazy weather. They pulled back the rain for the most part, unfortunately. We really love a good rainstorm right now. Think we all would. So that schedules, or that project's scheduled to be completed by the end of the month, so. Be all wrapped up, looking good. Tom Warble was in my office today to talk about the restart for downtown projects. And then a few minor things that need to be cleaned up for the water projects, so it can be completion, or final completion can be done on it. Sounds like there's a good chance BSB could be in middle, middle of May. And as far as the downtown project goes, Macy Robert tomorrow, Robert and his crew tomorrow. They're going to fix the few things that need to be fixed on the east side of the road that was completed. Couple of the well moved pits needs to be, the grave needs to be adjusted, as well as the water valves need to be adjusted. And then filling in the holes, or the empty spaces, obviously. Then they'll begin to work on the library improvement project. And then start at Frenchman Valley Chiloff and head south, so we're excited to get that back under construction and go on again. So on the meetings. Nothing. Until May third. The planning commission will meet at noon here. We will. So we'll, sorry, give me background. This Friday, we will open bids on the RFPs for the rewrite of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, the zoning code, which is something we budgeted for. I have two in hand right now. I spoke with the third consultant today, the doctor named before the meeting. So today we'll be putting areas in the mail. So hopefully three at least to review, so that's, that's good news. We'll open those Friday at four. And then the planning commission will go over those at noon on May third in this room. So then I'll take us to our city council meeting. On the eighth, we meet early because Monday is the first, so the second Monday in May is May eighth. Feels like way, way early, but it's for real. So that's all I have in the way of communications right now.
Thank you. Standby committee reports, tree board met, and they, we will have Arbor Day at one o'clock on Wednesday. At the park, the fourth graders will be planting two trees. If anybody wants to enter, which if you drive by and see what's going on. Kimberly.
The Park and Rec Advisory Committee met April the eleventh. The ball program applications just closed last week, and the last I heard, they were at a hundred and thirty-four kids, which is pretty amazing. I think that
They're working in there.
Ten teams?
Eleven.
Eleven teams, so pretty awesome. They did give an update on the Legion Ball Program, which is not going to happen this year. They were short by three players, unfortunately, but still planning for future, so that's, that's good. Advertisement for the outfield banners, at the time we met, there were three inquiries, one purchase, update on that?
Twenty-five.
Hot thing, so advertising that availability helps.
Two, two of those being on that.
Wow. That's fantastic. Good news. Lots of stuff, really. Ball field improvements by way of the dugout. It is going to be above ground project, just cost prohibitive to, to do the underground as it is, but probably not until fall. I don't know if there's any updates on that. And then you will see some license and management agreements in our agenda as a result of those, both pushed forward to the council for today's meeting. I think that is all. Pool still approximately May twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth opening date.
Please.
Weather dependent.
Thank you.
Yes.
Attorney?
I don't have anything.
Sam?
No.
Edward, any additional comments or?
Nothing.
Okay. Jesse provided the financials. Jesse, do you have anything, any comments or anything about them?
In there, there's another one of the ledger reports that's a study where after the audits that's right, I think that's the final internal interest that's up with them, so I included this because the cloud balance adjusted a little bit, one of the adjustments that they did in their set was for those that kept out these for the fund. On the airport, the great economy, it did set off on a cloud, and then finding the street, which was that, that was the the last, that's what he lost. And the sign homes were the access from other items on, but the specialists have to include it and tunnel it with.
We just make a quick note as well, that with the violation of airport road and everything, we were able to to send stuff to county, we were agreeing on the mission. It was the day to
Does anybody have any questions for Jesse? Okay, one second. Subject presented. All right, public comment. Just remind everybody, if you have something to say, you have to come to the
podium.
podium and state your name and your address. Public comment, they have? Nope. Okay, moving on.
I had one, Andrea.
You have a public comment, okay, yes?
I just wanted to say on behalf of myself, just thank you to the team volunteers that showed up for the park cleanup. Not really anything you even want to do around your own house, so. I just appreciate that people, it's a big draw in the summer time, our city park, so appreciate all those individuals that showed up.
And the tree board kind of organized that and got that right. They, they're a great group.
Yep.
Along with all the others, but yes.
Public comment, there's a little required comment, we are planning to, people are planning that as manual, manual man, so we're successful, we want to like you continue that.
Right, any other public comment? All right, moving on to unfinished business. Jesse, would you read ordinance twenty-three oh three oh one? Start reading, please.
Ordinance number twenty-three oh three oh zero, ordinance by the mayor, uncle of the city of Grant, for example, draft. And they use our vice municipal code of the city of Grant, for example, draft. Ordinance number eight to the national, not to the one, by I U D U D, subparagraph D, after one, federal administration. Article five of individual special one dash five oh three, assuming.
Thank you.
We'll make a motion to approve and accept ordinance number twenty-three oh three oh one as presented. Second.
Kimberly made a motion, attorney's second. Comments? All right, I vote yes. Attorney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
All right, moving on to unfinished business, we would have a action and discussion on approval of the license and management agreement between the Oakley Traveling Baseball Team and the City of Grant.
Okay, our direct force is, we're guiding this to the end of the state. This was not compatible with the legal agreement, Braden and I have issues too. And we're sort of starting this opposite sense. The allegiance for team and organizations utilizing our facilities that are not cities.
It's got non-inclusive clause, or you know, basically, we, you know, have to do with, you know, the cities, city takes precedence for day-to-day operations, so like that. And it was the first year, so I think if this, if any of these teams become really popular and continuing, I would recommend that we add in an auto renewal for at least three years. But if it's not a popular team, then obviously not, but I think that, you know, one year for the first one, and that's just my much suggestion moving forward, if it if it's not, if these keep renewing every year, I would do an auto renewal for a few years, just as I knew.
That's something you can do, that would not be a problem. Yeah, I would say this for here.
Yeah.
Thing is if the organizer, the head coach is, or change, we don't have
Sure.
See, we have, it's the second to organize this team, so I think it would be a big, popular.
Yeah.
No, I think he signs and Ben signs and then first
You have to offer, you have to authorize you to sign, or is that part of that motion? Okay. I make a motion to approve the license agreement between the Oakley City Travel Baseball Team and the City Grant and authorize Ed to sign and the, and the Parks and Rec Director also sign. And Jesse.
Second.
Sam made a motion, attorney's second. Questions or comments? Attorney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sam?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the action and discussion on approval of the license and management agreement between the Perkins County Swim Team and the City of Grant.
We're similar here, we also have pretty much chance. Schedules haven't really matched up to do in person meetings, other than over the phone conferences and they are new coordinators out here. One is returning, but the other one is new, so they're, they, they were very understanding of why we made the agreement. There's some, some stuff they were going to look out outside of the agreement, like what time to start practice, so on and so forth. It's actually changed every year. So nothing against the, to be a definite agreement, where it stands the area that they will be occupying, there's like the license and management agreement for the open team. So definitely, we think they're not here.
Make a motion to approve the license agreement, license and management agreement between the Perkins County Swim Team and the City of Grant. And authorize Ed and Jesse and Braden to sign. Thanks.
Second.
Kimberly made a motion, Sam's second. Questions or comments? All right, I vote yes. Sam?
Yes.
Attorney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Discussion on the looking at this poll as referred, the consumer price index.
Okay, we are at the six month mark, and our the LA is financially received for for the year, for the fiscal year, I'm assuming what we've got to do, so I tried to do a set of precedents to do. This was March's report, and that one comes out in June. As you can see, from a year ago, in March twenty-two, all items are still worth five percent. So five percent is still above, above and beyond last year, so no down take there, really. I do expect it to be, to start the trend down, I just don't know when. I think the economic advisory you listen to or speak to would also say the same thing. Just because of the state of our economics. And with that, I did include oh, no, that's it for the, sorry, next one for the exit. So any questions, comments? And I appreciate, you know, we've, we've done sort of US-based approach, and I think last couple of years, we sort of tried to hone it in the region, and this is as far detailed as the CPI, I don't know, they don't know anything, but we can state much of it in Michigan or Omaha. And that's really not going to go on. There are some things that are better down. According to CPI, the nonverbal energy is down six point six, and that's encouraging. Gasoline is down, doesn't last long, three percent.
Yep.
And utility gas service is down point eight. So there are some things that are down, and some things that are up. Just a reference point, we'll be referring to this as we start to, start to build our budget, you know, later in the year, and using it to guide our weighted compensation. Any questions you can feel free to ask, or if anyone comes to you later, or?
Thanks for putting it together.
Thanks for that next sheet as well, the analysis of whole lot of four percent. I guess probably as we continue to work through our budget, maybe if you can extrapolate that out, just let us know these various amounts with you.
Yeah, this is very, 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 very remarkable. We'll get a touch on that in the next, we can, I don't know.
Any other questions before I move on? Okay. So we have discussion on employee wages.
Okay, so I did include the latest per page survey, when we participated in. Thirteen, based on your guidance last year, we had more than thirteen replied, I think there was twenty, I can use a fancy, twenty-six from three. There's more than, there's more than thirteen, but based on your guidance, in previous years, I narrowed this down to a tighter field. As you can see on that first page, the populations are, the highest is twelve eighty-five, and the lowest is one thousand two, four eleven ninety-seven, so twelve hundred. Or within two hundred above or below, basically. Get detail on the different positions, so the administrator, so clerk, public works director. Most of these were, were closer, thanks to your effort last year to meet in. Some of them are exceeded of median. And then Kim, as you referenced on that, what, what might it look like on the wages, the plus or minus four percent? And then I did comparison to a dollar fifty, because that's what minimum wage is going, I don't know. I can't say this about every employer, I don't specifically speak to know every employer, but I mean dollar fifty on the bottom line, and that person was starting to creep on a ten-year employee, your ten-year employee is going to say adios. So a dollar fifty is not quite four percent, as you can see. It just depends on what the starting wage is. So I thought that was a good comparison, or a good starting point. I'll continue to, to work on that, pull those figures out, and we'll input them and see what they look like in the budget like they did last year, and this will have an effect on our, on our budget. Our, our new budget for twenty-three point four. Those are real numbers, this is between three and twenty-four. So any questions on, on that? Again, it's just a starting point, just to get this in your mind a little bit. Hang on to these, if you need another copy, let me know, we'll be, we'll be working off these one day.
I appreciate the, taking the feedback from last year and just starting off in a super efficient place, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I do.
Any other questions or?
That dollar, that dollar fifty with the new laws is going to create additional fun challenges, you know, make everything fair across the board, so.
It's a different, it's a difficult wrinkle.
Yep.
It's going to be difficult for the next few fiscal years, if we go towards a fifteen dollar minimum wage.
Yep.
And then, and then after that, I believe it's starting fiscal year twenty-seven is or cooler.
Yeah.
So they'll look at additional minimum wage every single year. Not to say that it wasn't justified or necessary, and I appreciate, appreciate the latter rather than one day hit all at once. But it will create a wrinkle, for sure.
Okay, are we okay to move on? Action and discussion on approval of employee benefits, health insurance renewal.
I was hopeful that Dan was going to be on, and that's about five thirty. Unfortunately, we, we had a, we had a naked, we could always, this is my question, people, that's the one more meeting, if there are questions for Dan, or you can move on to those questions. July one, we'll start our new renewal, our new series from July to June. You can see I highlighted that our current plan. And then benefit management divided into options, HSA, HSA opt-ins, not on the options. One, two, three, and four, and they are recommending, if we want to keep the same plan, option two, which we are currently in. That represents a four point zero, four percent increase in premiums. In the insurance world, that's called a grant sign.
Remind me, we, on the HSA, is it a match, or do we automatically, and then you?
The HSA is a, is a set limit.
I know that, so the employer, do we, do we automatically, and then, or do we only, do we only contribute, is it only a match? I can't remember what you said.
Automatic.
Automatic, okay.
Yeah, man, and I apologize not having those ready, I was actually working on those when we sent the packet out.
I see it, I just, I just couldn't remember how we just.
There was a lot of data in there that I didn't want to put wrong.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember we matched, or we, if we.
You guys have seen this before, this is our normal health, health insurance breakdown that I've done for you. I added in there that last box, the total health HSA life benefits paid by the employer, which I think is something to keep in mind as well, to looking at the full picture for health life and HSA.
And the life insurance, the October and November doesn't have an amount in it for this current year, because you'll remember they took forever to get it set up, and so they finally got it set up in December, and benefit management was, they shouldn't have paid for the last two months.
Oh, okay.
So of course, then the next year, it'll be four point twelve. And also this year, if we, we're doing it in the fiscal years, we'll have actually an extra health insurance payment in our budget, so when you guys are kind of looking at that and comparing that potentially at the end, we couldn't pay our amount that we normally would in September until October.
We'll be sure to highlight that. Any feedback on the plan? We changed it last year, so.
The, the plan, I mean, as far as all intents and purposes, the plan was, is identical, it's just labeled differently, because it's a different provider, light. So, no, no. Either way, Kim, no good, no negative, so no news is good news, isn't it?
Either, yeah.
Did ask Danny what maybe he would anticipate this time, next year, as we're looking at this again, because you know, based on your, your plan and the number of individuals that we are looking to grow the plan by, he said I would rather do for three to five percent. So that, that number on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four spreadsheet, that's why I broke them up into two spreadsheets, current fiscal year, the next fiscal year, does represent a five percent increase as of July twenty twenty-three.
Well, we looked at this pretty hard last year, and I think, I'm I don't like any other programs better than the current one we have. I don't have a problem with approving it tonight, because I'm not going to prove it, I wouldn't want to do the, the other three anyway, so I I would just stick with what we went through last year, because it seems like the best meal, and it's the best for everybody.
And four point zero four percent, again, like Dan said.
Yeah, but the other.
Exploit your, your successes and your wins while you can, because we can say the complete opposite, with a twenty percent increase.
Yeah, hog and max goes up pretty significantly, pretty quickly on the other ones, so. No, and we don't save a whole lot of money, so I think we, I'm just fine with just keeping it.
I'm good with that, yeah. What's for you, what's?
Yeah, well, I was just, well, I was just trying out, I just wanted to see what everybody else thought, you know. I'm pretty good to know, people are agreeing or not, but I don't get a big argument, people are make a motion to approve the employee benefit health insurance renewal for the light two option, HSA option two, light.
Second.
Yes.
And the second, I'll read it.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Jesse made a motion. Kimberly seconds. Any questions or additional comments or anything? Turney, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sam?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
All right, action on bills and claims. Did everybody get to? Okay. I will make a motion to go in.
Forward litigation.
Okay, I move to go into executive session at seven-thirty. For legality purposes, including counsel, Edward and Jesse, and the attorney. All right, I made a motion. All right, any questions or comments? All right, how do you vote? Turney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I vote yes.
We say all bad, it's recorded.
Make a motion, we've had an executive session, and we go to.
Second.
Motion, turney second. Questions or comments? Dan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Turney?
Yes.
Kimberly? Action on bills and claims.
Move step action on bills and claims, and the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, fifty-nine cents.
Turney in motion. Kimberly second. Any questions or comments? All right, I vote yes. Dan?
Yes.
Turney?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Thank you.